Good evening and welcome to the April, but on Thursday instead of Wednesday and back and forth again, Orange Board of Selectmen meeting. It's Thursday, April 11th, for those of you that keep track. Yeah, we've had a lot of goings on and we have a couple of things that we needed to have good input at the table tonight. So I think with that said, fire for this large crowd we have here. The emergency exits in the event of an emergency, go up the stairway that leads up to the rear parking lot. If for some reason that is not passable, you would then go down the hallway out the back, which would lead you to out to the firehouse, or you could go up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors. And that will put you out in front of the town hall. Be sure that you don't get stuck behind Mr. Siffarelli. He will not be the fastest mover up the stairs. Well, oh, the elevator is down. It broke when we were having those four days of the special voting. A motor, a motor went and they're waiting for the motor, so that's why the elevator is not working. That's what I was told earlier today. Well, there was banging in the beginning, but it stopped.
Because I haven't seen Vinnie, so I'm worried.
Picture him. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That would be a funny cartoon. Okay, I'll start on my left right here tonight.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Good evening, PJ Shanley.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
And Danny, Secretary to the Board.
Very good. Okay, public participation. Public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow two minutes per speaker. Is there anybody for public participation? Seeing none at the table? Mitchell? Don't worry, I know you got something.
You know I got it. It's April.
It's every month.
This Saturday is the household hazardous waste collection. Clean Harbors will be behind High Plains Community Center down by the lower pavilion. People will enter Tribute Way. That's the driveway that goes down around the back of High Plains. You should pre-register first, please. Any household hazardous waste, it'll be, you do not have to get out of your car. It'll be collected from your trunk. And you're going to proceed after that, take a sharp left and go straight up back towards the pavilion and out to Orange Center Road. Should be seamless, 9:00 a.m. until noon, household hazardous waste. The 27th, Saturday, the 27th, also from 9:00 to noon, will be the shredding day and other items. We'll have paper shredding, documents, medical documents, tax documents, all those things. For shredding, no charge. It's sponsored by the Rotary Club, although a donation is requested of the Rotary Club for their scholarship fund from those that come. We will have electronics recycling. There is a charge for that, about $5 for a phone, $10 for a tablet and $20 for a PC. That'll also be collected in the front of High Plains near the shredding. Right outside of High Plains, closer to the building, will be the mattresses. You can have your mattress picked up for $15 a mattress or box spring by calling 795-203-795-3906 to get that arranged by the Lions Club. Otherwise, you can bring your mattress or box spring there for free recycling. And while you're there, right outside of High Plains, right under the portico there, there'll be the CERT team, I believe, with the Bodak Committee and the Orange Police collecting prescriptions and other used or unused, I should say unused, prescriptions and medicines, medications for proper disposal. The Orange Community Women and the Buy Nothing Orange will be under the pavilion, collecting all kinds of clothing and toys and games and also exchanging at the Buy Nothing Orange area. So a lot going on. That's on the 27th. This Saturday, this 13th, it's just hazardous waste. And the 27th is everything but hazardous waste.
And Mitch, quick question.
Yes.
Sue von Robinstein, aren't they going to be collecting for the kids?
Collect the, correct. The group, Food to Kids and Orange Food Bank, they'll be taking a collection under the pavilion for that as well. Collecting that.
Mitch, just a quick, I just got a text asking what, who do we register for the hazardous waste?
So you register with the Regional Water Authority. You can go on our website, the town's website. There's a
Link?
A link there. There's a QR code. If you see the signs around town, there's a QR code on the signs you can put up. If you fail to do that, when you get to the event, while you're in line, you can put the QR code in your phone and do it right on your phone. The registration basically, it's very simple. It's just going to ask you your name and some basic information with town you're from and approximately, it doesn't have to be exact, approximately what you're bringing in, how much liquid, how much solids, that kind of thing. So they have an idea of what's coming in and they keep track of that. And it's not only for, it's being advertised pretty much exclusively to Orange residents. It's not only for Orange residents. Anyone who's a member of the RWA can come to the satellite collection. But the particular town that you're from will be charged, because we do get charged. It's in our budget for the household hazardous waste.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make one addendum to what Mitch said. As far as the hazardous waste, how hazard is it? I don't know some of it. But it's said as household hazardous waste, but a lot of people out in their garage or in a cabinet or in a shed have also yard-type chemicals, which sometimes people don't consider those as a household thing. Whether you have a partial thing of a dust, dust for your roses or roundup for weeds or something. If it's any of those outdoor chemicals or fertilizers that you don't know what to do with also, those are also included in this. You can bring those as well, so.
That's correct. I think the term household is that it's not for businesses.
Yeah.
We don't want businesses coming with 55-gallon drums of things. That's basically what it's about. But yeah, it may be, maybe better termed residential hazardous waste. But the term they provide us is household hazardous waste.
But a lot of people have gardening-type things that they no longer use.
Pool supplies, gardening, paints, solvents, anything like that is all accepted. The one thing that's not accepted that people are concerned about is these small one-pound propane tanks that go on the small grill. I don't know why, but they're not accepted at the satellite collection. It is accepted down at the Water Authority during the regular time periods.
I don't think we take those at the transfer station.
No, we don't. No. So you have to bring those to the Water Authority.
To them directly.
Directly, yeah.
I think that's a transportation issue, I think, with those. You know, because a 20-pound cylinder that you have on your grill, if for some reason you have a fire and that tank levees, it can have impact over 1,000 feet, 1,000 to 1,200 feet beyond your back deck. So I think that's probably why they don't want somebody showing up with a, I always remember one of, one friend of ours up on Orange Center Road in one of the rear houses, he was burning all the paint off his house. He had a box full of those, those little green ones, because they're up on the ladder burning the paint off and all. And then he didn't know, how do you get rid of them? It was a challenge. So anyhow, anybody else for public or announcements? We all want to say. Bob, you, Tom, you don't want to plug soccer?
No, it's okay.
You have your signups? You're all done? I saw you.
I'm starting. I'm not ready.
Okay, okay. Wow, okay. So I have, I have, well, I saw you on the parking rec meeting, so I figured any chance is a good chance. Few announcements here. We had a bad week a couple of weeks ago. We lost several people who were very involved with the town. Mitch made a thought that three of them all had connections to this Board of Selectmen. Three nice ladies all died in a week. Two of them affected one family on both sides of the family. It was really quite a bizarre week. But our thoughts are with Bob Archibald, who was very involved in the town. He was involved in just so many areas, but the Orange Foundation, he was always there to help us if there was a need for something through that with funding and stuff. And he was the chairman of the Senior Condominium Project, the Silverbrook Condominium Project there. And he was on other boards and commissions and helped with the fair and with events. And Bob Archibald used to be everywhere. He was, he was just so involved. He was just a terrific guy. And Mickey Reed, who was an avid swimming teacher, I mean, she was a great lady. She, she also volunteered at the Fireman's Carnival to help her husband right alongside him. And she worked at the pool and she was known for, one of the ones who used to teach the toddlers swimming lessons and stuff up there. And she went a long time into, well into her years at teaching up there. Emma Cuzicrio, she and Joe, Orange Fence, and they were so involved in things. They had sons that had some special needs and Emma was a champion for that. And Joe was a police commissioner. Roy was on our Board of Selectmen. And that family has been here for 100 years and they were so giving to the town. And then Dolores Nastri, Anthony's wife, she was here. She was involved in just so many things. And she was a teacher and a music teacher and she was always an aspiring poet. She always came up with a poem for something when she was at it. And all these people passed within a two-week window. And it was really a shocker to those of us who knew them. And our thoughts go out to all of those families on those losses. But on a happy note, Nan Giaveen, who many of you had as a third-grade teacher here, lives here in town still, she's turned 100 this week. She did. Yep, Nan turned 100 this week. She lives on Charles Court. Do you remember what the street and house number is? 219? 249 Charles Court. If there's anybody that would like to send Nan Giaveen a birthday card. She's visually impaired at this point, but she's up and around and sharp as a tack still, other than that. So yeah, I saw her a while ago now, but yeah, she turned 100 years old. We have five more that are coming up that we've tracked down for this year, so it's really a great thing. The Board of Finance Budget Hearing will be Thursday, April 25th at 7:00 p.m. in the cafeteria at the community center. The AMITI Budget Referendum is Tuesday, May 7th from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at High Plains. And remember, all districts, all vote at High Plains Community Center. The Annual Town Meeting, which is our meeting where we receive the budget from the Board of Finance, is Wednesday, May 8th at 7:30 in the High Plains Community Center gym. And the Town of Orange Budget Referendum, which is the town budget and it includes the AMITI budget at that point, is Wednesday, May 15th from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., also at High Plains Community Center. And again, all districts vote at High Plains. So that's what I have for tonight for that. Minutes. We have the minutes of our Wednesday, March 13th, 2024 meeting. If there's any errors or omissions, please state page and paragraph. If not, is there a motion on those? So moved. Okay, motions made and seconded. Good job, Ian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Stay. Okay, one abstention. Playing with the koalas. Okay, down under. Okay, item number one under new business is to consider an act on the request from the Orange Lions Club to waive the facility fee for use of the High Plains Cafeteria on Friday, April 26th for a military wist, which is a card game, for those at home that don't understand. If you are interested in that, you can try the American Legion phone number on Grass Hill Road, or you can, no, it's not the Legion. This is the Lions. They don't, so they have, all right, you know what? Call the town, call the town hall, Anne in the First Selectmen's Office, 891-4737, and she can connect you on that one. Yep, this is for the Lions. It's a military wist card game, card party. Any motions, questions? We've done that before? Okay, motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Staying unanimous. Item number two is to consider an act on waiver of bid process for the expansion of the serva data room at the Police Department. I think Chief Gagny is going to come up and speak on, I know. Johnny on the spot over here. We have a vendor that we generally use for this stuff, so I think that's what he's going to speak to, but I will leave it up to Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, that's correct. We have a vendor that we have an existing relationship with, CSB out of Branford. This project, we need to expand the server room, and this isn't something that you could just bring a regular general contractor in to do. Obviously, if you read my memo, you see the sensitivity of the equipment that's involved. And the vendor that we use does have existing relationships with municipal government, including us, the state and federal government, to include the FBI and the U.S. Coast Guard. So we have a lot of confidence in this vendor. We're happy with this vendor. We don't want to trust our sensitive stuff to just anyone.
And I believe this owner of this business is an Orange?
He's an Orange Town resident. That's correct.
Yeah, so, so this is, this has been on the books for quite a while and then it was off the books. Now it's back on the books. They need the expansion there. This money was approved under the capital requests? Okay. Yeah, yeah. So questions for the chief?
Chief, is this particular bidder on the state bid list?
No.
It's just one that we've used?
They're limited.
Has worked for the state, has done sensitive telecommunications equipment work with the state, but does not have state contract.
No, they are all pretty much independents on this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid as presented, the bid. The memorandum from the chief has presented to waive the bid.
Second.
For a, is that a not to exceed price, chief?
Yeah, it's not to exceed $100,000.
Okay.
So I'll amend that to include not to exceed $100,000.
Okay. Motion's made. Is there a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Just how long do you think it'll take them?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Once they get going, I think it'll be a fairly quick process. I'm not sure what their backlog is right now, how soon they'll be able to start.
They were, these, this is the same company that installed when we had that go-around with the Fire Department and Police Department, new communications equipment that had to get moved up the tower to another location and this same company, I believe.
That's correct.
Does that installation work for us, for the Police Department and Fire Department? Well, no, they didn't do the Fire Departments. They did the Police Departments. So we've used them steadily. And like I said, the, believe it or not, the company is owned by a man, a young man who lives in Orange, loves Orange and is raising his family here.
It's done work in Guilford too, Mitch.
Yeah. Okay, so motions made and seconded. Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Staying unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Okay, John, that one's set. All right, the next one is item number four, or three, rather, to consider an act on the adoption of a phase-in of real property value to be implemented July 1, 2024.
Jim, does it make any sense to wait for Vinnie to come? Does he come and think?
He's working on that other issue. Do you want to move it to the end?
I think there's a lot of questions, at least I have some questions that he's going to have to answer, I think, based on his memo and a few other things that we were going to have, I think. It'd be good to have him in the room. I don't know if anyone feels that way.
We'll just move it to the end if you want.
Just move it till he gets here. That's fine. That's all right?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Put that over there. And don't take it. That's mine. Okay. Item number four is to consider an act on request to approve the license agreement for the rental of a seven-and-a-half-acre farmland parcel on Grass Hill Road owned by the Town of Orange. I will say only this, that that is the piece of field that we've let sit fallow on purpose for, this is its fourth year now, opposite the American Legion. And with that, I invite all of you to have discussion, and I'm going to go sit out there because I'm not going to be part of this discussion because I know the players. I'll get, I'll get, I'll get accused of something. Who the hell knows?
Who are you appointing to run the meeting?
Judy can run it.
Oh, I can, oh, great. All right, well, since I'm the one, first off and very quickly, I would like to say I would like to not rent it this year. Reason being that it was very nice to drive by today and finally see some green grass growing in that field. It's been a long time coming. I know that Jim has put, I think we talked about 40, 40, 43 loads of mulch from compost from the town. He's limed it. We had that done. And I really would like to give that field another year. I would like to encourage the town to spend some of my uncle's trust money that he set aside in order to maintain the property. And I would like to encourage us to agree to use some of that money that we can go and add cover crop. We can get some of the stones picked up there, clean some of the border around it. But I do believe one more year is going to be the best thing for that land. And so I push it on to you guys.
Nice, thank you.
And you do have one of the applicants in the room.
I do. Oh, oh, good, hi. I want to talk to you.
They'll have the opportunity to go to the podium.
So, yes.
Oh, yes, Mitch.
Okay, that's a surprise. I wasn't expecting that, but okay. So you feel from a, just to make sure I understand, from a farming perspective, it's best to leave the land for at least another year, the way it is, just? And fixing, you're going to, who's going to do this fixing up you're proposing with, with money from your, the trust?
What we would have to do is go out and find, you know, somebody who's going to come. I don't know whether we can quote pay for, like, the Highway Department to come in and do some of the work, or if we're going to find some outside people to come in.
Okay.
But I would like to get that done and I will, if this happens, I will definitely try and get that obviously happening sooner so that we can get a crop on it, because I'd like to see a crop, actually like a grass-type of crop. I do want to take some of the soil down to the ag station, get it tested, see what they suggest. But it's, it's really been a crime for me to see that, that, that soil has not rebounded. And using it continually for a corn crop, it does take its toll. And so I would love to see it chance one more year, just to see. And then we can, you know, put it on to all of the lease agreements like we do for next year when they come up.
So with that recommendation from you, I had some other ideas coming into this meeting, which are going to be a little bit different now, but I will, I'll put our recommendation out then, that because this was advertised, obviously, for a rental, that we first of all, obviously, explain to the three parties that put in bid what we're doing, if this is what we do. But I would recommend that then next year, if it's appropriate, if the land is appropriate to be used, that we actually put it out to bid. Instead of saying $350, because I wasn't sure where we're going to go with this with three, you know, I won't say equally necessarily, but with different, different types of uses, and it would have created a concern, you know? And people have criticized us about, you know, determining how much the land is worth and it's been very low value. We know that. And it wouldn't be, not that we're going to get thousands and thousands of dollars for this, but I think probably the best way to do this, if we do it, if we do put it off, is the next year, make a recommendation and that next year, we actually, you know, put out the same information, but put it out for bid and go from there. And the last thing I was going to say is, knowing that we did have this used for corn many years ago, I do know that if we have an opportunity, possibly, to use the property for something other than crops that require a cannon, we'd be, we'd be better off. Because I do remember meeting some people on Farm Hill Road when they moved in, who were not very happy about what was going on in their backyard and had to explain the, what we've all explained about. But if we had the choice, you know, if it's, if it's corn or nothing, we go for the corn. But if it's corn or something else that doesn't require a cannon, I'd rather see us go that route. But also, I think we're better off just putting it out to bid. That's my recommendation.
So, so let me get that, so if you're going to put it out to bid and say that the person who wants to plant corn is the highest bidder?
We have to make, either we make a decision as a board, we're not going to do that, or we have to make a decision at that time and look at the bids. And maybe we say, okay, if we're going to pass the most, maybe we do. I was, I was thinking of that mostly because I was looking at three possible, you know, uses, you know, one of which I believe would need a cannon. The other two I wasn't, I don't believe would. I'm not sure. Maybe I'm wrong. And so, you know, I would be, if we were looking at the three tonight, I would have been pushing for one or ones that were not using the sound devices, basically. But then we can decide next year whether we want to just go out to just the highest bid or we want to go for the highest bid that doesn't use a cannon. I guess we can decide that later. But just to, just want to throw that out there after examining all this. Thank you.
I, I agree with you as far as the, those bird scarers. They serve a purpose and it's very important, because if you've got a crop, you're going to try and protect it. But now all of those neighbors have had it quiet there for four years. So I agree. That would be something that I think we would have to really look at if we do open that up again. Because, I mean, we used to get phone calls from the people living down the lake complaining about it millions of years ago. So, so that's something that I think we would have to think about. So I would open, be open to a proposal or if anybody wants to make a motion and table this, or can I just table it? We have to vote?
We can, we can, we can table it or we can make, or just, or act on, act on it by making a recommendation to not be.
Right.
Ask if there's anybody in the room.
Let's see these two guys first, and then.
Anybody else at the table?
Well, I just have a question, because I, you know, this is something that I'm not familiar with. But Judy, based upon what you're saying, you think that the land would be better served if you gave it another year and then tested? But procedurally, these bidders seem to, these people that are interested in renting the property, seem to also plan on either cultivating it, putting some type of process down in which you can use it later on. So I guess if you can educate me and the residents of the town, how does this normally work? I think I'd be better off understanding it.
I think the most important thing is that we were looking, and I was having a lot of conversation with, with Jim about this, just the farm thing. We were looking at that lot. It's got an awful lot of rocks. So we were thinking, okay, we've got options. Maybe the person coming in who wanted to rent it that first year, they're going to be spending a lot of time getting the land just ready to do something. You know, so maybe, maybe don't charge them a rent that first year, trying to figure how to balance it out. And the more I kept thinking about it, this is very awkward to say, okay, fine, we're going to, you know, let you rent that land. But by the way, it's really going to require getting it all cleaned up. You're going to have to, you know, get everything like, like your lawn, get your lawn prepared and whatnot. So in essence, that first year is really going to be a lost year. I think it behooves us as a town to do that, to do it ourselves, to get it ready so that next year, when we do think about if, if this is the way it goes, next year, if it goes up, you know, for a rent and somebody wants it, it's a viable piece of land to start working on. I, I just kept reading this thing and I said, that's kind of harsh to have someone come in for a whole year and you're not going to gain and profit from it.
Right.
So by doing that, I would, I and also the, I would go to the ag station and find out exactly what is the best to do for that particular piece of land and get it back up so that you've got, you know, you've got little bugs and worms and everything coming back. It's, it's almost there, but not quite.
I guess my only concern would be, why should we as a town take on the expense when we can push it off to somebody else?
Because I love that land.
Oh, I understand.
And because I would like to see it back to the way it could be. And my uncle left the money to do that, so I think we should use it.
Than anybody. No, absolutely. I'm just trying to understand it. That's all.
It's a love of the land.
Yeah, I get it.
Just, just, excuse me, just as, just as point of clarification, Jim, Jim's the only still a farmer in town. The 621. The, the six twenty-one Lambert Road, there is money, John, in an account, at this point we have, I think about two hundred and sixty thousand, we get a, we get a disbursement each year of interest from a trust account that Richard Wright left, and it's specifically to be used for improvements on that property. So it's not actually taxpayer dollars.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, you, Judy certainly have a lot more experience and expertise in this area than I do, I have a hard enough time keeping my lawn alive. And I think you brought up several good points, I think if that money is there for that specific purpose, then that makes sense, and I also like Mitch's idea of the bid approach, because we do get questioned on the dollar amounts, and I think that's a good alternative, a good solution to it, so.
Good.
I like both ideas.
I think we have somebody in public.
If you would like to speak, this is your chance. You have to go to the podium, but, yeah.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Anthony Carr, I live on Dogwood Road. I have been trying to be a farmer for a number of years, and over the last year, I've been trying, I have started the farm, it's an active business, we do have a farm tax stamp, and I'm able to operate a farm in the town of Orange, but I have had a lot of issues trying to start a farm. So I tried to buy a farm, I was outbid by cash, I tried to lease a farm from Lou's Tree, leased some land from Lou's Tree Farm, it was on Farm Link, and he, I was asked to, for fifteen thousand dollars a year, to do two and a half acres, which is impossible for my family to do. I have, I'm a veteran, so I'm able to get a lot of, you know, help with starting a farm through the USDA, and I've studied a lot on regenerative agriculture, invasive species, soil management, and everything like that. What I believe with that land, that land is not ready to be farmed with crops, I don't think, the topsoil is essentially gone on the top, there's a little bit in the middle that you can handle, and you can see I've kind of pointed those areas out. But what I think I can do is plant natives, natives, grasses, and different flowering plants to bring the wildlife back into the soil, to let the earth kind of heal itself. I don't believe that we're going, because of the invasives in the area, and because of the nature of the soil, that it's going to heal on its own. So I would like to kind of basically overseed with natives in most of the land, and then work towards just a single acre out of the three that is empty, and then kind of work through that to get into wildflowers, and I would like to be able to sell those wildflowers at the Orange Farmers Market, as well as to pick your own for people. I would love to do a half acre of, of that with, with vegetables, and I would be very open even exploring a community garden within that, because I know Orange doesn't, but, but, you know, is doing vegetables and selling that as the farmers market as well. I have four young daughters, and I just really want them to experience farming, and it's been very difficult in this area to kind of get into it. So I've kind of put together a plan that you can see is how I would, you know, phases of bringing it in, bring in some bees, and do an apiary in there, do everything to kind of just bring in the butterflies, the bees, and start really healing that soil. And so I, I think it's possible to bring it back, but I don't believe that that land is ready for corn anytime soon. So I would, I would like to just try and, you know, let the land be as much as possible, and focus on just enough, and let the, you know, and bring flowers to Orange, so that's my part, thank you.
Thank you.
And he would be accepted as a vendor at the Farmers Market, I spoke with Aunt Marie also about that.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello.
I, I am well, how are you? You look good.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen.
There's chaos.
Where do we want to go with this?
Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, Judy, you know more than anyone that's sat this table, and even by the individual that came up and spoke publicly, that it's, the land's not ripe for, for much of anything at this time. And the fact that there are resources from this trust that would make this land, I guess, more profitable potentially in the future, I mean, I, I have no problem with waiting on leasing this land out, so, I mean, I guess having said all of that, I mean, I would probably just ask this board to table it until we believe that this property is ripe for, for rental use.
Like I say, I tend to agree with John, I appreciate what Mr. Carr has come forward with, because it sounds like he's, he had done a lot of research, and has some really good ideas, but I think, Judy, listening to what you've said, you know, maybe for his, even for his own purposes, if he bids again next year, we might be better off letting things get fixed up as you've proposed, and it's not just, but my understanding is, you're, you're not just saying, let it go a year, we're basic, we're basically saying, we got work, we as a town have work to do, that we can do, based on this trust and getting the things done there, so.
I would go all the, you know, all the way to the fall and get a cover crop for the winter time.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, just even the cost of seed is astronomical, so, you know, that's something that I don't think it'd be fair to put on somebody else's shoulders if they're just getting themselves started.
Right. So is, is the proper motion then to table, is the proper motion to deny, and what are we doing, I mean?
The proper motion, if you don't want to deal with it, Mike, I'll call myself out. So if you want to postpone this to a future date, it would be, not be a motion to table, it would be a motion to postpone. And if you know a date certain, and put it, like if you want to reconsider this in three months, four months, six months, you postpone it till that agenda item, that agenda month.
Because I think postponing it to where we have the, all of the other rentals, isn't that in the fall, we do that, I believe?
Well, it would depend on when this property's prepared, I mean, when, when, when do you, from your idea of what you want to do, and I understand, I think I understand it, is this something that's gonna take us a full year, are we back here next April, or something we could do this fall, or something that needs to wait until?
You would have the lease available for the winter, save for the others.
So the winter, and then people would plan.
Okay.
You know, at that, at that point, we would take care of up to the winter crop, getting that, that, that winter crop on, and at that point, people would then come forward with all the other rentals.
Okay.
And we can include it in that, and then we're all on the same timeframe.
Okay.
And just a point of order, since we're already violating our rules, if we can have any motion to withdraw, you withdraw your motion to table, and the second, because motion to table is not a debate motion.
Was it seconded?
It was, it was.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe we would debate it.
So can we have a motion to withdraw the first motion?
Because it was my motion to table, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to table it, and I'll ask this board to consider motion for postponing the particular line item here at a later date. Do we have to give a date, or can we just?
You don't, you don't have to give a date, it can come up administratively.
Okay. Can, can we say, though, part of your motion, John, that at, whenever it comes back up, that we actually put out to bid?
I, I don't care, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, do you want, is that something you want to include now, or is that something we want to discuss, so that when we do all of the land rentals?
We could do that, my, my, I won't say my concern, but what brings that up is the fact that unlike the other, other ones we've had, we've had had some controversy on other ones, let's not kid ourselves, but this is the first time we've had, I think, you know, people actually say, oh, we, we put a, we, we, the town, put a notice out and said, you know, proposals to be presented, and here's the price, I think we'd rather just say, give us your proposal, and include the price that you're willing to pay. And then, then we know, look, the, the answer may be two fifty, it may be four hundred, it may be four thousand, but then we know more of what the value is, as opposed to us putting, us putting a number on it.
So you're, you're asking the person who was renting to put the value?
Yeah, for the person renting to put, put together a proposal with a bid, yeah, they would actually bid.
Okay.
With proposal with an amount that they're willing to spend.
And so we would do that with all the different rentals, that's what I'm asking.
I'd like to, but right now we only have one on the table that we're discussing, so.
But in the fall, is that, that's what I'm saying, administratively, would we be discussing that?
Put it back out the agenda to discuss at a later date.
Thank you. Okay, that's a good idea.
Fair enough.
So my motion to postpone is, is on the table, if anybody would like to second it.
Thank you, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
I appreciate it. Gosh, that was fun.
Let me know.
Okay, Vincent, they postponed the phase-in one, because Mitchell has a multitude of questions for you.
Postponed it to the later part of this meeting?
So you were here.
Okay, so.
Until you actually walked through the door, but I wanted to give you the benefit of doubt to sit down.
I appreciate that, and wipe up the sweat and the rain. But that's what a suit is for, all right. Wherever you want to go, Mr. Firstlet.
Thanks, you all gave me more work. I may just sub that one out to somebody else.
Be kind.
Oh, well.
All right, this number five is gonna be long.
That's, that's a compliment.
Yeah, I know what he wants to do, but I'm reading what there is, to see if we get rid of the other easier stuff first. All right, I'm gonna go to item number six, next, if that's okay, can we have a motion to go to six and seven, let's get rid of those, they're both relatively easy.
Now that, now you know it's gonna be long.
Item number six, to consider an act on license agreement between the town of Orange and Orange Community Nursery School, their lease is almost up, up in June, I guess, and the new playground was wood chipped in and all over there this week, that finally, that finally got done, it was dried out, the place dried out enough, it actually dried out beautifully when it finally happened. And so the only change to it that I had is the dollar amounts, the yearly rent, and it's approximately eight percent per year, plus or minus that number, for each of the three years of the lease, that's the only change to it, it was sent to the director and treasurer of the nursery school, and I don't know if they reached out to you or not, but that's all I got.
Do I make a motion to approve?
Okay, motion is made.
All second, for discussion.
Okay. Second is made for discussion purposes.
The, the playground area, I know that, that the town did replace quite a piece of the equipment, and obviously did some of the maintenance, but I'm, it just goes back and forth, and I'm just curious, because the summer camp, and also just the regular wear and tear of anybody being able to, you know, pop in there and use it, I'm just wondering if that's something that the town could either take complete control of, or somehow split it, I don't know.
It's, it's, I believe it's in here, it's actually on us to maintain that.
The lease, okay, so it is.
Yeah.
So, but is that also in the equipment, you're including the equipment in there?
Yeah, it has been.
Okay, all right, that answers that question, I wasn't sure what the equipment, okay, thank you.
Oh, I guess that, that is, yeah, okay, I'm trying to think what the other lease was, that's right, all right. Yeah, that's, so that is on us already. Others, otherwise, Mitchell?
Yeah, so the current lease is what, twelve hundred a month?
Twelve, this, right now is twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty, or thirteen, okay. Yeah, I just, and you, you really answered my major question, was, because I knew the playground equipment was put in, but from what I can understand, it wasn't being used, but now it can be used?
Well, it can be used by the, it can be used by the general public, Danielle has to get it approved by the state board that approves it for daycares, but it's open for the general public, it's, it's all set.
Okay. You haven't heard back from her at all about whether she'll accept this lease, at all?
She acknowledged that she received it.
Okay.
And also, that's all I can, so we didn't hear back, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Very good.
You know, it's still, I'll be quite honest with you, for the two kindergarten rooms there, plus the outdoor area, plus some custodial heat, light, water, maintenance, it's very, very reasonable still, so we're slowly working it up to a better amount.
No, I'm not, I'm not denying that, but also for this, this particular year, the entire school year up until just now, where you're saying not even yet, they haven't been able to use the playground, so, you know, we've got to.
Oh, well.
But that's on her, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a luck of the draw, it wore out, and that's the way it goes. Yeah, there were, there, you know, there were complaints to repair it, it got held up with like everything else coming from overseas.
Yep.
And when the equipment finally got here, then Mother Nature wasn't cooperating, and, you know, it's those tankers and box ship boats that bring everything across the ocean that are a challenge, if you know anybody in that area that can expedite it, let me know. I, I know one. But anyhow, so that's what it is, and that was the only change.
Good.
So it's gone from twelve fifty to thirteen hundred is their first jump.
Got you.
All right. Yes. I was waiting to see if there's anything else, are all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Stain? Unanimous. Item seven, to consider an act on request to approve tax refunds totaling seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Stain unanimous, all right, so now we're gonna go back to item three, which is the revaluation dilemma. This one, and you see right on the front, I think, I presume she put yours on the front too, John had worked up some possibilities with our homes and the Board of Finance people's, also included, yeah, so with our homes and the Board of Finance people's homes for possible happenings of the impacts, and there is a question with OPM, because we, we postponed this twice, we were allowed to postpone it twice, Hartford went looking for people to join on to postpone this, because it was when Hartford, when they were giving Hartford the bailout, and they were looking for other towns, so it wasn't looked at as a select favor, and they needed some towns to join in to ask for the revale delay. I received a phone call from Hartford on it, we proposed it, the group agreed to it, voted on it, and yes, we postponed it, and that happened twice. Now there were fi, I think, five other communities with us, are we, are there four in us?
Wilton, Danbury, and Stanford.
So three, four of us. Now, and if you go in and you look at the OPM count, the state has created something new. For the last three hundred and fifty years, there's been eight counties in the state of Connecticut. Well, now there's nine. It's not really by counties now, what they're doing is, the legislature in their infinite wisdom has shifted to going by the COGS, the councils of government, there's nine in the state, so now they have gone from eight counties to nine COGS. So we are not in the same COG with the others that were extended with us, the Wilton, Weston, Stamford. We are in the New Haven COG, which is fifteen communities, from Milford to Madison to Meriden is our region. So they're trying to do this leveling act, so even though, to the best of our ability, revales are supposed to be done now every five years, used to be ten, they made it five. Well, we delayed, and as these other communities did, the other communities- The other communities are due for revaluation in twenty-seven. They're saying Orange is due for revaluation in twenty-six. Not because of our affiliation with these other towns that we jumped on with when they were giving Hartford a deal, but we're in a different cog. And they're trying to balance Orange with the towns that are in that cog. They want it so like a whole cog region is doing revaluation at the same time. I don't think that's a good thing because there aren't that many companies out there that perform these revaluation services. And out of the hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state, a hundred and, I think a hundred and sixteen of them all use the same data company for their tax bills and all. And so there's going to be some other burdens of this. So they're trying to tell us we have two more years and have to do a revaluation again. And I've spoken with Martin Heff, Kevin McNabola was here, he left. He's spoken with Martin Heff from OPM. Vincent Marino.
Has yet to speak to Martin Heff.
Hasn't spoken to Martin Heff, but there's going to be some legal wrangling. Vincent is convinced between the documents that are there that we should be twenty-seven with the other communities that jumped on at the same time for that revaluation. But they're looking at it through these cog organizations. Vincent is looking at it through the legal documents that were set up by the legislature and OPM. So it may have slipped through somewhere where somebody didn't pick up Orange is in a different cog than Stanford, Wilton, Weston. So that's where it comes in. So, so you're going to have plenty of time.
I'm going to try to keep it short.
So then, so the Board of Finance discussed this, wrangled with this, and I believe they recommended twenty-five percent, which would be one of the four years. So that's one consideration that's coming forward. I've heard other people that think maybe we should just load it whole boat and be done with it. That's another consideration. But what you're going to do is either way, we're going to worry about this coming tax bill, the July one twenty-four tax bill. And in the meantime, legal beagles are going to be working on, do we have one more year? Or three more years or two more years? That's, that's what's going on there. So now with that, I'm done and I give it to Vincent.
Yeah, now let me just start with a slight pat on the back. When, when the legislature changed the law moving those communities with a mail exam to November, they, there was an oversight. And they didn't address the term, the terms of the offices of the elected officials who's, were currently in office. And I raised that as an issue and initially they said, you're wrong, they're wrong, they're wrong. And I said, well, come election day, unless we swear in the newly elected officials, no one's going to be lead in charge here because your office is going to expire on election day. Well, the legislature ended up changing the law yet again because ultimately I was right. So I don't think I'm wrong in this instance because what OPM is not doing. I'm trying to get through it for you, is following the law. That's really where it starts and ends, right? The legislature, not OPM, is what sets the law on this. Twelve dash sixty-two is the statute that we look at when we say, when are revaluations going to be scheduled? Now, what Jim was saying about these various cogs is correct, but that triggers in twenty-twenty-four. So what we're, what we're looking at is the timeline for when Orange should schedule its next revaluation. Because if you look at the schedule published by OPM, no one in the cog, our cog, has a timeline that is similar. We're all on different dates. So OPM is not even following the law to go into effect in twenty-twenty-four by getting all these communities together. So if you look at the state of the law, which twelve dash sixty-two was amended by the legislature under twenty-two, Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four. And what that, the pertinent language in that public act, and I stated in my memo, and I, what I tried to do is give you the history of the revaluation of the town going all the way back to twenty-eleven. I actually looked going all the way back to twenty-oh-five, okay? And in twenty-oh-five, we deferred to twenty-oh-six. But what the legislature has said, if we fast forward to paragraph nine of my list, all right? Special, Special Act twenty-two dash six provides that any required revaluation subsequent to any deferred revaluation implemented pursuant to the prior sections, and that was our choice to defer from twenty-two to twenty-three, shall be implemented in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash sixty-two of the general statutes. All right, such subsequent revale shall commence at the point in the schedule required pursuant to section twelve dash sixty-two of the statutes that the municipality was following prior to such deferral. That's twenty-twenty-two, okay? So now what we, we do is say, all right, after they adopted Special Act twenty-two dash six, they amended twelve dash sixty-two in Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four. And in, when their repeal and substitution of the language, what they said is, okay, we have this time period prior to when this cog concept was going to commence. And then we have subsequent to when we want it to commence. And what they say in the Public Act, section seven, B one, capital B, any revaluation. So now, remember, in Special Act twenty-two dash six, it refers us to follow the law under twelve dash sixty-two. Now, what OPM is saying is, this was the state of the law before they changed twelve dash sixty-two. They're reading the old statute. That's not the law of the land today. The law of the land is twelve dash sixty-two as amended by Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four. Okay? So you got to follow a bouncing ball. And OPM has made these mistakes before and Mark, our tax assessor and I have called them out on it. And that's why we have a memo from undersec, the undersecretary that I've included and dated September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, where he acknowledges his mistake. And by his own words, the last paragraph, or second to last paragraph of his memo, upon the, upon this review, the town is, Town of Orange is not required to implement their next scheduled revale until October one, twenty-twenty-two. OPM will update our revale schedules accordingly. Well, pardon me, but they didn't, right? Because if you look at their public, published schedule, we go here to Orange and Orange, Orange, all right, twenty, where's Orange? Twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five. Well, by my math, simple math that is, got five fingers, you can count them because it's only going five years. Twenty-twenty-two brings us to twenty-twenty-seven. I don't know how they get to twenty-twenty-six unless they're using twenty-twenty-one. But if you look at the law, and that's what we have to be bound by, right? That's what, we're a land of laws. It says in the law, Special Act twenty-two dash six, that the assessment year, so it says the municipalities of Danbury, Orange, Wilton, and Stanford, which are required to implement a revaluation of real property for the assessment year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-two, may defer to twenty-twenty-three. So the law is establishing that we were scheduled in twenty-twenty-two. So now again, five years, right? Before they change anything related to twelve dash sixty-two, which is in the Public Act yet to come, about a week later. But it's a five-year schedule. So twenty-twenty-two puts us on twenty-twenty-seven. Okay, then, you know, again, when we look at Special Act twenty-two dash six, it says, for purposes of your schedule in the future, defer to twen, twelve dash sixty-two. Well, I can only defer to the law as it exists. I can't defer to a statute that no longer exists. And when you follow the law, okay, and you go to, I'm going to just go to my memo and cheat here. When you go to what Special Act, sorry, Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four, section seven, B one B, revaluation subsequent to any delayed revale, twenty-two to twenty-three, shall recommence on the date in such revale dates scheduled prescribed for the revaluation zone in which the town is located, which revaluation date, this is the key language, which revaluation date, schedule applied to such town prior to such delay. That was twenty-two, okay? So you go twenty-two plus five years, twenty-seven, all right? So that's why, what I say in my memo is, I'm of the opinion that OPM's published schedule is completely wrong on so many different levels. But particularly, I only care about the Town of Orange. You know, and I say it so, wrong on so many different levels because it does not conform to the law under twenty-two dash seventy-four as it amended the language of twelve dash sixty-two. That law says, commencing October one, twenty-twenty-four, OPM shall establish these region, you know, these districts, and everyone in the district shall be on the same schedule. They're saying it's going to take us to twenty-forty to have that happen. That's not what the law says, right? So I don't know if they have that latitude. You know, someone's going to get messed up here. There's no way that you can take everyone who's on this five-year different schedule and suddenly say this region is going to now be on this five-year schedule, this region, that. There's going to be times where someone's going to have to revale.
There'll be a problem.
In three years. Or if, if, if the state is going to do this. So I think the state's going to find out that this genius system that they're trying to create to save economies of scale, which are not going to work because there are not enough services to be provided, they're going to have to change this law again. So I believe, number one, I, I spoke to, who did I speak to now? I spoke to someone at OPM about just general, you know, deferment and whatnot. And they said what a lot of towns are doing is, who are on a two-year cycle, let's say, they're doing twenty-five and seventy-five. They're doing, you know, or some are doing fifty-fifty. So I said, yeah, but I don't agree with your assessment of our, and this is what we're going to do. So I said, all right, let's do twenty, if we do twenty-five, after discussion with the Board of Finance, if we do twenty-five the first year, because we believe it's a four-year cycle, that gives us four years, times twenty-five is a hundred. If we need to litigate this, so bring a, an action to court to seeking declaratory judgment, which we would get within the year, we can do that. So let's do twenty-five with the expectation that it's going to be twenty-five, 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 and twenty-five. And if something were to happen where what I believe is my well-reasoned opinion is not going to stand because some judge on the Supreme Court disagrees with me, then we'll have to do seventy-five next year. But I, again, I think this is well-reasoned, I think it's based on the law, and I don't understand under any, any, you know, I'm going to say scrambling of this process, how OPM came up with the schedule for the Town of Orange. And I traced it back to twenty-oh-five. And I didn't want to confuse you further than I might have already, but that's kind of where things stand. So I think that there's a comfortable basis to stand firm with OPM based upon its prior changing of its position to our position. I think that there's no question that we were scheduled on October one, twenty-twenty-two by the law, by the undersecretary's memo, right? So we have that. And then if you go five years out from twenty-twenty-two, which the law requires us to do, it's twenty-twenty-seven. Are there any questions?
So with that said, Mitchell, you had said you had questions earlier. Did he, you're rolling your eyes, did it answer any of them?
I think I have more questions. Vinnie, the schedule that's in front of us that's updated eight twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two. And Martin, yeah, I know, Martin Heff's letter, it says, OPM will update our revaluation schedules accordingly. Is that the updated, that's before that dated letter, so?
Well, this is, this is the schedule.
They, they.
They didn't update.
They didn't.
It's, it's clear because what he says in his memo is that we're scheduled for twenty-twenty-two. But this is something I just downloaded off their website a couple of weeks ago.
And I, you're going to get something else on another agenda item we have. And I ran into the same thing with this legislative research on another document. They're, they're not updated on the state of Connecticut's access.
So I guess my question, and Vinnie, why, why then with all this going on in your letter to us that was dated going back to April second, and today's April eleventh, you haven't reached out to OPM?
No, you'll understand that more when we go into executive session. I explain what I've been doing, not only with the app, well, we'll get to the application that I've been working on. And the two legal matters have been consuming most of my time with my other responsibilities. So, and I, it's hard to reason with someone who, I need time to speak to the undersecretary.
And he was very, very challenging on this. I think he feels, because I did speak with him, and I do have a relationship with him, and he, I think he feels very challenged and he's going down with the ship kind of thing. I think that this, and they're doing this with the cogs versus counties in a whole bunch of different departments of government business. It's not just OPM doing this with the revals. I'm encountering this with other departments that I'm dealing with also. They're going by way of the cogs, not by way of the counties, so.
Right, but, but let's go back to the county situation. This, this schedule from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-seven does not take into that county situation.
Doesn't take anything into account.
That, that's going to, that's, that's forthcoming is what you're saying.
Right, well, no, what I'm saying is, if you go to OPM's website.
Yep.
And you go to their page that captures this issue, that is published from a link on that page. So I have no reason not to believe that that's their schedule of revales because if you look at that document, Mitch, look at the top of the document.
Yep.
It says, dates pre-revaluation year prior to Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four, revaluation schedule effective October one, twenty-three pursuant to Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four. This was created following the passage of twenty-two dash seventy-four. It's wrong. I'll just say it's wrong.
And so, and so your, your understanding this would be, if it was correct, that instead of saying twenty-twenty-six, we say twenty-twenty-seven?
Well, what I would say to you is this, Mitch, is that it's, revaluation year prior to Public Act twenty-two, twenty-two dash seventy-four should be twenty-twenty-two, right?
Okay.
Because that was the reval year that we were scheduled by his memo, by the law. Twenty-two dash seventy-four was approved in twenty-twenty-two. So, right, so that's what our revale was prior to the adoption of this act. Revaluation schedule effective October one, twenty-twenty-three pursuant to Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four. The, the first column should all be different, notwithstanding where you are. Because this new law doesn't take effect until October one, twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
So October one, twenty-twenty-three, our date should be twenty, twenty-two plus five, it's twenty-seven. It's October one, twenty-twenty-seven. Then the second year, the second column and the third column should group us pursuant to the law with the other municipalities in our cog. So whoever put this together was not thinking and considering the law. And that's really all I got to do. I don't know what was going, what imagination was going on when they created this document, but this document makes no sense to me.
Well, then the entire document, you're right, because we're not grouped in the second and third columns with other, with others.
It's not my document. I can't take credit for the error.
I will, but go ahead.
So just, just to try to narrow this down for, for myself and probably a lot of people. Our choice as a board is either to adopt what the state of Connecticut is telling us to do?
Well, it's not the state of Connecticut. State of Connecticut is the legislature and they're, they, they put out the law. This is OPM, that's an agency of the state.
Okay. O, either follow by what OPM is telling us to do.
Yep.
Or decide that we believe with the interpretation of your analysis, which by the way, I've read and I agree with you wholeheartedly, and go that way, which could lead, could lead to potential litigation.
Potentially, there's always a risk of, of us, if they firmly reject the position and we firmly believe in the position, then the only way to push back on them is, well, there are two ways. Get the legislature to pass a special act to say, OPM, this is what you've got to do, which will, will approach that, could approach it that way, or go to court and seek a ruling from the court saying they're wrong.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
PJ, Jody?
So again, even to further clarify, John, I think we're talking about one of two things. Phasing this in or not phasing it in?
Potentially three things.
Well.
And how much?
And the second, you know, if we do, if we do phase it in, there's two possible outcomes. We do the twenty-five, 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 twenty-five? Or if the state rules against you, and I read this too, and I think you're right. I think you put some really good information in here and you summarized it well. I've talked to a lot of people about this. I've talked to a lot of people about this, and members of this board, members of the Board of Finance, neighbors. And just looking at the summary that John put together, Sifarelli, there's, these are some big increases, and to not consider a phase in, I think there's plenty members of our community that can afford it, and I think there's plenty members of our community that would be significantly affected by not phasing this in and absorbing a tax increase of this magnitude in one year. We have a lot of people, seniors on fixed income, that this would be a huge financial burden. So even if it's that second option where you were incorrect, I, I still think it's easier from a financial point of view to do a twenty-five, seventy-five percent increase if that was the outcome than just doing a hundred percent.
And just, just to clarify, the options for the table, you could do nothing, which would be a hundred percent day one. You could do twenty-five and seventy-five, which is the recommend, with twenty-five the first year, believing that it's four years with seventy-five being the second year if we're proven wrong. Or you could say fifty-fifty, right? Because theoretically, if you just fold and say, we're gonna go and assume two, you could do fifty and fifty. Those are your options, right? I just think we all need to be aware and conversant on the options, so no one leaves the room saying, I didn't think about that. The recommendation is twenty-five, right? Because that's the, the, I think the more likely outcome here is twenty-five over four years. I think the undersecretary is going to come and see the light. Because it's, it's, you can't argue with the law. It's, it's black and white here.
Judy?
Well, getting all that information now, I, I agree, I don't think we should sit back and just wait for it to, you know, sit back this whole first year and just think we're gonna have the either four years or five years or whatnot. So I think we really should jump in, and I would recommend to go the twenty-five percent. And we gotta get it started.
Well, that's what the Board of Finance is waiting to hear, is what we decide tonight, which is.
Did you hear that?
No, they're over there. And,
So, so, so we're, they're waiting on that, but then,
like Vincent said, there's a couple other items which have taken an inordinate amount of time recently, which is what has delayed this a little bit, but we're moving those forward tonight, and then this will be his next on his radar. Mitchell, one more question?
Well, now that we're kind of off the schedule thing, which I'm not sure we resolved at all.
I don't know how to resolve that, Mitch. It's not our schedule.
Well, if, 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 if the schedule is corrected, it would be a five-year.
It'll be four years, twenty-two plus five is twenty-seven.
We were, we were extended to twenty-three.
Right, so the first year is twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, revow twenty-seven.
Right, but twenty, twenty, no, it'll be twenty-eight. If, if, if our revow, if our revow got pushed out to twenty twenty-three, which it did by the law.
And then the law says you go on your revow date prior to such delay, that's twenty-two. So twenty-three is only the date that we actually did it.
Right.
Twenty-two is the date you do the math.
Go back to.
So, so by pushing off a year, we then, we then escalated the, the next revow by, by a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you did that because of the COVID bump, hoping that they, the, the market would level out a little bit.
Didn't really happen.
You, you can't, you can't, timing is everything, right?
No, I get it.
It is what it is.
I, I, I just thought by going out to twenty-three, our next one would be twenty-eight.
No, we wouldn't like that, but the legislature didn't do that.
All right, well, that, that being said, someone needs to explain, not just to me, but to everybody else, what it means, I don't care if you pick one of these homes, or just pick a theoretical one, you know, just pick a thousand-dollar increase. So let's say this, let's say if we don't do a revow, if we don't do a, a phase in, that the increase for person X is a thousand dollars a year.
Right, I would just say one thing is, the, the vice chair of the Board of Finance did a very good slideshow on this presentation that explained this. So if anyone out there in TV land wants to hear it, look, go to the internet and watch the Board of Finance, because it was put out in PowerPoint presentation.
We don't have that PowerPoint in front of us, and we were asked to make a decision, and I'm trying to understand what it means.
What, what, what part are you hung up with now?
All right, so if, if, if.
You're on the front page here, with all of us on it?
With all of us on it, assume somebody has a tax increase. If I'm looking at, I guess, the, the second to last column, the second to last row there, right? Where you see it starts at nine twenty-seven and goes across to six seventy-seven, does that make sense to anybody there? Tax increase? See what I'm talking about? Oh, I'm on the wrong page, I'm on the wrong page. Where it starts at one, one thousand sixty-four and goes across to seven hundred fourteen.
Right.
Okay. So the assumption there is that the mill rate's a twenty-six and a quarter, and that's gonna balance next year's budget as the Board of Finance has right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So theoretical person has a one thousand dollar increase.
That would be me.
Well, I'd be close to you, but, yeah. All right, theoretically, a one thousand dollar increase. By phasing it in, what happens to that person's increase?
It's two fifty a year.
Okay, it's two fifty a year. How do we make up the rest of the money?
That's not, that's, what do you mean?
Well, if, 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 to, if, to get to the budget, you need a thousand dollars from, from person A, and you're only gonna get two fifty from person A, where's the other seven fifty coming from to?
So, think of it this way, values go up, values go down, right? The residential values went up greater than the commercial values.
Got it.
To the extent that you're phasing in, you're phasing in the difference between residential and commercial over four years. Think of it that way, right? The finance director might be able to explain it more articulately than I. You know, but that's what.
So we're phasing in just for the residential, not for the commercial?
Well, I don't know, because some commercial may benefit, I don't.
Trying to figure this out, well.
No, you're, you're phasing it in for all property, not personal property, not autos. It's just the, the property.
Okay.
Okay?
Real estate.
Now, now, if you phase it in at twenty-five percent, that number that I gave you there, twenty-six point twenty-five mill rate, is gonna go up.
Okay.
It's gonna go up to around thirty-one something. I, I thought there was an easy way of figuring this out, but I have to go back to Mr. Brancisi. He has to give me a new grand list, because there's certain exceptions or something to what I understand is the phase in. Raw land, I think he mentioned, and some of our, our commercial
Okay.
tax credits we've given and all.
All right, so if you're, so that doesn't quite work then? Because if you're saying that the current mill rate is thirty-two point three-one, agreed?
Right.
If you lower the mill rate to twenty-six point two-five, theoretical person X has a thou-
That's a hundred percent phase in.
A hundred percent.
Right.
Right, because it has a thousand-dollar increase.
Right.
Right? If we go to two hundred and fifty-dollar increase, now the mill rate's gonna go up.
No, you can't go at it two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
If you go at a twenty-five percent phase in,
Right.
Mr. Brancisi gives me another grand list number, then I take that grand list number and figure out what the mill rate's gonna be to match what we need for our taxes to balance the budget.
So it's not gonna be two fifty then? A twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent phase in means that person that was gonna pay a thousand dollars is not gonna pay two fifty?
Correct.
Okay. That wasn't what was said a few minutes ago.
Because of, because of what I said about the, the exceptions to the grand list. That's a simple.
Give it this way.
You've got a budget you gotta make. If, if you, if you charge me two fifty instead of a thousand, I can't get to that budget.
There's a grand list.
Right.
That's gonna be set by the tax assessor.
Correct.
Right? Your, your value of your property, the incremental increase realized as a result of the re, the twenty-three revow
Yep.
is going to be, that incremental increase is going to be phased in over four years.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's not the tax, let me just interrupt for a second, just to understand it. It's not the taxes that are being phased in, the assessment that's being phased in.
And then, then, now I have a increase in my assessment, and so I have a hundred percent still, but it's, it's only twenty-five percent of the twenty-three. Now you say, what is the percentage of the value of this piece of real estate to the overall budget that was set to tax?
So it's not a case of my tax being a thousand dollars going to two fifty? It's a case of my, it's a case of, is it, well, it's a, it's a case of if my, value of my home went up by a hundred thousand dollars, you're only gonna put in two hundred and fifty thousand in the fir- twenty-five thou- twenty, twenty-five thousand in the first year. That's what you're doing.
Right.
That's what you're doing.
Right.
Right.
And then the tax gets based on that.
Right, correct. So every, so.
Driven by assessment, not that tax number. The tax number was to tell you approximately, this is where you would shake out at this mill rate and this mill rate. But if you go with the phase in,
Right.
it then shifts the assessments, which then will give you a different value.
In a different mill rate, to make it happen, okay.
So, yeah, once, once you determine the number of years of the phase in and the percentage, then it's just an equation, right?
Yeah.
So.
Mitch, don't worry, you're only two years older than me, you'll keep it working just the same as me.
And again, this is not anything that this town has control of.
Not worry about me, worry about everybody else out there, just, just so everyone understands what's being done.
A lot of people won't understand it, no matter how.
If we don't understand it, they're not gonna understand it. If we understand, we can explain it to people.
Some of us understand it, but it's, it's on the assessment, not on the tax. You can't take the tax and say you're gonna cut it into four pieces.
Now we got that clear, that's good.
The easy way to explain it is, I got a raise, and I'll just give you a number, seventy million dollars in taxes.
Yeah.
So whatever mill rate number gives me that seventy million dollars is what it is.
Right. But I think the easier thing for people to understand is they got, they got a tax, they got a, they got an assessment increase. If the assessment went up a hundred thousand, that first year, only tw- twenty-five of it's gonna be put in. Then the second year, another twenty, if we do twenty-five.
Right, it grows.
And it goes, okay.
And I, while John is standing here, I want you to just, there's three parts to our budget. There's the Orange Board of Education, there's the Amity Board of Education, and there's the Town of Orange. Tell them what, do you remember off the top of your head? I do, what each of the, and I know if you don't, over there.
I don't have the book with me.
But approximate, tell them approximately what each increase is.
I believe our budget is up about three and a half million dollars. Amity is about one point seven, Orange Board of Eds is about eight fifty, and the rest is the town. And I did a spreadsheet for the Board of Finance of the increase for the town. Most of it, except for about a hundred and fifty thousand, is labor increases over the contracts that we had to redo.
John is correct, the Amity part is about a million seven change, but four hundred change is due to population shift. When one town is a little bit less in students, one is a little bit more. It's not that Orange has increased crazy, but somebody else may have just dropped, and it's only this much. So our actual Amity budget increase is about a million four, and then there's, or a million three, and then there's another four hundred or so on there for population shift. So our Amity part is a million seven change. The Orange Board of Education part is eight hundred and change increase. And the Town of Orange piece is two and a fraction, a million increase. Part, part of that is labor, part of it is operational expenses. PJ, is it all coming back to you? You're, you're getting twitchy over there on this. But, so that, just so those here at the table and at home understand where the, there's three points to our budget, and that's where the money has to go to those three sections. So as long as you, you know, keep wanting and all, and improving things, it all costs money. So.
Coming back full circle, again, for this board's decision-making tonight, we're either gonna agree to defer the revow based upon the information that's been presented to us, and, and.
I think there's already a motion, isn't there?
Well, you know, what I would suggest, just to save ourselves,
Yeah.
is a motion to phase in the twenty twenty-three revow, the first year of that phase in to be twenty-five percent, and the balance over the allotted remaining term, right? So this way, you know, we can come back and report, but if it's, if it's only gonna be two years, then the math is simple. If it's gonna be, it's gonna be two or four years. So instead of saying twenty-five, it's twenty-five the first year, and then the balance to be split over the remaining term of the phase in, right? This way, we're, we're saved either way. If, you know, it's gonna be seventy-five or twenty-five.
Either way, it hurts.
Right, so moved.
Okay. You got the motion entered enough that she knows it, so.
So what people, people need to understand then, is that you are.
It's gonna be very challenging, but they're gonna.
You are, you are, you are by legislating a tax increase for the next number of years.
It's my fault, Mitch. It's not, what I'm doing is applying the law.
No, 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 I'm talking about just, just a phase in, not the law.
No, that's, the law is, it's your choice, no, it's, it's your choice.
I'm saying, we, by we doing this.
Well, would you rather implement it full boat?
I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm asking you a question.
You can either do a hundred percent today or twenty-five's.
Which, which are you more comfortable in?
How, how many towns did revow this year?
I can't answer that.
How many of those, how many of those towns did, did a phase in?
Right, a lot of them.
Have they?
Yeah. Majority of phasing, Wilton phased in, I know Danbury's phasing in, and I believe Stanford is phasing in. So this is, just is, everyone's doing it, don't do it because everyone's doing it.
No, I just wanna know, I, I haven't heard about.
Do it because you think it's the right thing.
Yeah, a- again, to, to be clear, and I agree with Mr. Shanley in, in the sense that to do this a hundred percent full boat is gonna affect too many people in this town.
Yeah.
So our only choice is to do what's in the best interest of our residents, and that would be to defer it so that the impact is not as excessive as it if we did nothing. So that's why my motion was right on board with our town council, actually verbatim, which was seconded by Ms. Williams. But more importantly, it's, it's for the benefit, in my opinion, for our residents. Simply put, so.
If you, if you feel otherwise, let me know, I'm happy to, to amend my motion.
I just want people to understand, it means that next year, if the, if, in the Board of Finance and everyone comes forward next year and says, hey, we've got a two percent increase, people should not be assuming that their taxes are gonna go up two percent. We've said it every year after year, their taxes are gonna go up much more than just two percent, because we're gonna have a phase in with it.
But their house is worth more when they sell.
Well, that, that's true, we all, we all know that. I'm sorry, I hear Mr. Leahy saying that's true, right?
Well, you, you are, your assets have gone up. All you're doing is saying, look, we're gonna take four years, let's assume it's four years.
Yep.
Right? You're gonna split that hundred percent increase, John has the data right up there, it's on your sheet. But most of the add increase in that column of a thousand sixty-four is from the revow. It's because our assets have gone.
Right.
And so what, what you're doing is, you're a hundred percent right, Mitch. You're building in an increase in the next three years after this year.
Okay, just wanna make sure everyone understands that, that's all.
Well, I, I think the average resident here in town, and there's three sitting in the audience besides all of us who are involved in this, understand and just by a nod of your heads, you don't have to come up, there's three of you, would you rather have it phased in over each year for three years or four years, whatever it shakes out to be once he gets done with OPM? Or do you want, would you rather just all of a sudden have a thousand dollars or more in year one? How would that work for the average person?
You have to phase it in because.
That, exactly.
The future is gonna change.
Yes.
That's true.
Same, same, I mean, here, here's the toughest one over here, he's got four little girls coming along. This, this guy, he's the toughest of the bunch.
You phased it in a hundred percent, what would the mill rate be?
It would push it way down, but they're also paying big bucks. I mean, I've seen recent, more so recently, because I am the grocery shopper in our house, and I've seen more people now, when I go to whether ShopRite, Big Y, Whole Foods, even Whole Foods, the people actually reading the labels, the price labels, not what's in it necessarily, the price labels, and they are paying attention to what they are spending, because I, I hear the people, oh, that's a, what did I get? I see people turning stuff back, oh, take this off, take that off. I mean, years ago, you never used to see that, their carts were heaped dried up. Yet, this past Saturday, the Milford and Orange Police had a deal with a problem on the Post Road. The traffic was backed up a mile and a half towards Milford and into Orange, going into Costco. There was no parking left in Costco. It was taking thirty minutes of, once a person got in the queue, to get out from the back of Costco out to the Post Road to leave, like they were giving stuff away. So. Oh, yeah, the gold, yeah. So I mean, it's absolutely crazy, but Costco, a mile and a half in each direction, our Post Road, was. Oh, yeah, the gold, yeah. So I mean, it's absolutely crazy, but Costco, a mile and a half in each direction, our Post Road, was in log jam. All right, so we have a motion on the floor here for a twenty-five percent phase in. The, uh, rest to be determined over the period of, uh, uh, the remainder of the, uh, allowable time. Any other discussion on that?
One last question.
Oh, this one over here.
One last question. Vinny, Vinny, you are, you are well, let's put it this way. You're confident that we're gonna be able to get an extension more than just the two years? Because, you know, reason I asked the question, reason I asked the question is because.
If you're looking for someone to take the blame, I'll take the blame.
No, no.
Here's the thing. I have a topic, my reason.
Because if we do twenty-five this year, and, and it's, and we, and we're.
Seventy-five next year.
In seventy-five next year.
That's the risk.
Or do we do fifty-fifty? That's, that's the reason for the question.
And look, as I, that's why I put those options on the table. That's your decision, not mine. I can only tell you, I believe my reasoning is well grounded in the law.
Okay.
Doesn't mean I'm right.
There's no guarantee when you go to court.
But if I were making the decision, and the decision is not mine, it's yours, if I were making a decision, I would try to lessen the burden on my constituents in year one and take the gamble. Otherwise, you're gonna pay fifty-fifty, you know, uh, and you're, you're skipping the opportunity to go twenty-fives across the board.
Mitch, one other thing. If you remember, and I think you were either on the board or the first selectman at the time, we went through this once before when I was on the Board of Finance. It was the same type of thing. It was, the housing market went way up. We voted a phase in, we got to the second year, and then we had a big recession, and the state passed a law to freeze it. You never know, that could, not the recession part, we hope not of that, but you never know, the state could vote to freeze it again if enough pressure is put on it.
Well, you know what, too? When this started during the COVID and the housing market started going crazy and it was walking up and walking up and walking up, people are going, wow, did you see what my neighbor's house went for? That's what mine's worth. Oh, did you see what so-and-so got for their house? It was all well and good when they were watching and comparing their house to the others, but now when the chickens come home to roost, it's a bit of a problem. You gotta pay the piper.
And historically, when housing prices go up this quickly, it usually doesn't end well.
No, that's right. Okay, so we have the motion and the second. Um, you sure? No more? He's worried on this one. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Unanimous? I would recommend to the Board of Finance, when they do their presentation, that they spend more time on this particular item than on some of the other parts, you know, of your lobby of slides that you always do. I think this is the one that's probably gonna need the most attention at your hearing.
Jimmy, I, I, I was aware of that back in March when.
No, I know you are, but.
And I already made a slide, so, but I agree with you.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, I think you're gonna have more questions on that than any of the other pieces. All right, thank you on that. Uh, now, let's see.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
By the way, Mitch, to your point, on that first column, that first, that piece of property, I forget the name of it, as an example, twenty-five percent phase in for that property means five point one, seven percent, if I did the number math right, I think I did. And were it not for a phase in, it would have been twelve point eight four percent. So that's on that, uh, is an increase on taxes on that property. So those are the numbers you're talking about.
That's mine.
And you, I think you can see the difference.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Item now, we're to the five. There we go. Um, discussion and possible action. You have more?
No.
You're all set for none. You're staying for the other thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yankees aren't playing tonight, so he's okay. Uh, discussion and possible action on submission of an application of the Town of Orange for a certificate of affordable housing completion. This one really surprised people. I, I knew that we had more than the state was saying. And the state had us listed at like seventy-two or seventy-six affordable units. And I said, that's not right. That's, that's way off. Well, it turns out over time, whether it was the zoning office or the assessor's office, or the clerk's office, or whoever it may be, wasn't my office, thank God. I got these to hand out. They had not reported to the state what, um, one for you and the two of them. And this is what I printed off from the state page, also not completely up to date, but that's what they got. You know, the, they hadn't received the updates of affordable. We have approximately five thousand four hundred and eighty living units at this point in time, in town. Yeah, and, um, we have approximately, as I call without looking here, four hundred and twenty-five affordable listed properties, living units in town. The state had us listed at, I think, seventy-something. And for years, I used to tell people we're at one percent, one and a fraction percent. Well, it turns out, we're actually at six plus percent, and we thought we were at forty-nine hundred living units until Mark updated us with some of these new apartments and stuff, and so we're actually climbed. We would have been beyond the ten percent number if we were still at the forty-nine hundred. Uh, but this was brought to light by the developer in speaking with her about the project on Smith Farm Road, which is forty-six units, thirty-six are affordable out of the forty-six. And, um, so we reached that point where we are able to ask for a moratorium. So then I'm watching the zoning meeting on TV, and they're now, they're starting to interview some people and all for the next ten-year town comprehensive plan. So I spoke with a couple of the zoning board members about this and said, do you think that we should consider this while you're looking into the comprehensive town plan? And so it was rece- well received, and, uh, so they're working on that. So if you get the moratorium, it's four years, the moratorium. We potentially have more living units than that. We potentially could get eight or twelve years, but what we're looking at is, uh, the four at the moment. And so, um, but I also found this other information and some of it, again, if you look on this one, the table is not updated on page two right here. I mean, it's not, but then I found the other pages, the last two pages of what I handed you. There's only one listing on the very last page, but those are updated. So it tells towns that are currently have phase ins and, or phase ins, moratoriums, and, uh, those that, uh, have had them and expired, and they're all over the state. And I even looked at them politically, and they're almost a fifty-fifty split politically, so it's not being done by politics or anything. You have to submit it to, uh, the Department of Housing, and they have ninety days to make a decision on it, um, if it's accepted or not. And one thing that, there's a couple of things on the, um, that interested me with it, and in the paragraph on the front page for background, that last paragraph, municipalities with an active moratorium are not subject to appeals taken under Connecticut General, uh, statute eight thirty-g, with limited exceptions relating to proposals for small or low-income government-assisted housing developments. So if we were to do something, we're not subject to it. But if you have another big project coming in, and sometimes we haven't had the problem here, well, we, we really haven't had the problem, I think, since the apartments probably. But, you know, in some towns, these developers, they don't get what they want, and then they turn the screws to the community by saying, you know, we're gonna put in four hundred units, and then the town files against them, you know, and then they have to go to court, and they negotiate, and the developers know that they're gonna negotiate, so they purposely do it. We haven't had that, uh, situation here, but, um, and some of these communities have had that, uh, situation. Um, but so that's why we put this forward. So then we had, um, uh, Clerk O'Sullivan and, um, Mark Brinkasey's office, and, uh, associate from Cohen, or Cohen Wolf, Marino, um, uh, law, um, and a couple others. They've all been working on gathering it, and when they got done gathering it, when they hit four hundred and twenty-five affordable qualifying units, and then they're rated by these HUEs, are they? Unit, was that it?
Yeah, housing.
I was gonna say CEUs, but H, HUEs, uh, the housing equivalency. Um, and we're in three hundred and ninety-something, or I think, or three hundred and sixty-seven. We only need a hundred and nine. Well, we need a hundred and nine, so, and we're at three hundred, and we're, 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 we're triple.
Three thirty-six point nine.
We're triple what we need for the housing equivalents, so.
And Jim, that's, that's, the, the primary point of this. This application is not to prevent affordable housing from being developed in the town. That's, if anyone is under that.
Nope.
Misconception, disabuse yourself of that. Uh, this protects the town from developers who use the eight thirty-G statute as a sword to break our zoning. So this is a protection against that, uh, that angle that some developers use.
Yep.
This does not mean that we will not have affordable housing developments in this window of time if there's something that zoning approves.
And everybody knows, I was the advocate who brought in the one on Smith Farm. Some people are happy, some people are sad, but I know we needed to have that offer of that housing, and that, that particular developer was looking at the site on the Post Road, uh, where the trailer park was. And I went and met with her. I said, look, I'm not against the project, you're doing a project here, but I really don't want school buses, if I can avoid it, stopping on the Post Road.
And just another point of information, every affordable housing, um, application that we have to defend in court for professional costs, legal fees, expert fees, cost the town seventy-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so.
So this is, again, this, if, once approved by the department, the town will get four years. We have enough equivalent points to then immediately file for our second four years. And then if the math works out and it's one oh nine point six we need, multiply that by three, if they accept a hundred percent, then we could go for a third application, 'cause the law says you don't have to delay in your next application.
And if you saw the stacks of paperwork upstairs, there's enough stacks of paperwork upstairs to probably fill at least two paper boxes, if not three. Uh, and like I started to say, so I met with that developer, they went around the corner, and so that's over there, and you have a new medical building being built where the, um, potential housing was gonna go. So it was kind of a, a balanced win mostly for the town. Like I said, not everybody's happy with it, but it's, it's a balanced win because you have a new, good tax, commercial tax generator on the Post Road, and you're offering some alternative housing that was needed. So that, that's my thought on that. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this?
I just.
You're my guru on this stuff. I thought for sure you would say something.
But I would say again, thank you to Vinny, Jim, and I know you were behind a lot of this, and to our zoning board. Um, this, this really goes to show how well a town can pull it together, do the best for the people that need housing, and at the same time, maintain the integrity of what our town is. So that's what I wanna say. Thank you.
And it's not guaranteed. They have ninety days to review everything, but there's, honest to God, there's so much paper up there that I'm probably gonna have to hand deliver it, and Vinny says he's gonna have somebody scan it in. I said, there's not enough time in the year to scan it all in it. There's just so much, um, but.
All ready for next time, though, right?
Oh, yes, but it, but it.
They could, they could reject. There's enough cushion here that we should be.
Covered.
As close to a guarantee of four years as I can give you.
Yeah.
'Cause they'd have to reject over two hundred and twenty housing equivalent points.
Yeah. So did anybody here at this table realize that we had that mu- we, the Town of Orange offers that much?
No.
Yeah? So.
We do, and, and, um, but the thing that surprised me in this whole thing is that we just have to reach this two percent level as opposed to the ten percent that's in the law.
And we're way past it.
No, I understand that the two percent are way past, but I've always seen, you know, it's ten percent, ten, am I right?
Well, exactly. That's what we always were led to believe.
You know, and I said, I, I've had the argument with many people, we're never gonna get to ten percent.
And Carol Martin is the one, I couldn't figure out how Ben Blake was doing this. He got the moratoriums twice. They, Milford has gotten them. Now granted, they got a lot of housing. They have built a lot of housing. But, um, um, but yeah, no, it, it's, so it's not truly the ten percent number. Carol Martin is the one who built the Smith Farm project, is the one who gave, brought me the information on how this works. Her people are who explained it to me, and I'm like, no, that's not what they told us, and lo and behold.
So Vinny, um, on the first page, well, the first letter that Jim's about to sign, it says the Town of Orange has four, four hundred and twenty-five HUE points.
This, this is all in rough draft form. This is not the application.
Not final.
And this is, I mean, in all, in all candor, uh, Jim's letter was, uh, first draft before I sat and did. I was up twenty-four hours with this damn thing. Because, you know, one of my paralegals retired, the other one isn't available, and so it putting this list together because it had to get done. And I wasn't, I didn't go back and change Jim's letter, which is really just a sweetheart letter.
Well, get it.
Selectman saying, we're filing an application.
All right, because, because.
The, 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 the letter that you should focus on, if you really wanna focus on a letter, is the letter that has to be submitted by the town's attorney. That would be me.
At the, at the end?
That's at the end. And while it's still in rough draft, because I still am looking to verify all of the housing unit equivalents that we're entitled to, I didn't realize we had so many homes. I know, it's, it's not on, right? Thank you for letting me know. Uh, so, uh, I didn't realize how many homes, like the Connecticut, uh, Institute for the Blind owned in this town, right? Those.
Qualify.
Or, those could qualify. So I'm trying to capture everything now, so, 'cause I never wanna do this again, okay? Uh, this is a, this is an undertaking like none other. Uh, and Patrick, thank God for Patrick. Uh, and I just wanna give him the credit he deserves. He has.
He's watching us.
Yeah, he has done, uh, you know, a, a great job in putting, really helping me on this.
He knows where all the paperwork is yet, I.
Right, and he's grateful for that.
Okay, with that.
With that's the letter, Mitch. It's at the end of the package.
Okay.
But that number's probably the closest.
That's the closest to real that we got.
Yep. So you might take this back to your place of employ for, of, as a point of interest.
Yeah.
Really?
It's a good form, Mitch.
Thank you.
Matt will assign you the job.
Yeah, they're, they're embracing it left and right.
Well, you know what? I know that we have to do something. I, and I argue they hate me out there, be, at CAG, when I say this, and in Hartford, because they keep talking about building housing everywhere. Housing, oh, we gotta build more housing. We gotta build more housing. The other day in the news, they were talking about Milford with this approved plan. They're gonna tear down the Sears building and all over there at the Milford Mall, and they're gonna phase in seven hundred and fifty apartments at the mall, on the backside of the mall, over a ten-year period. Do they have any idea the impacts on police, fire, paramedics, uh, school systems, town services, everything else? Seven hundred and fifty units in one location. And, uh, but at the CAG and stuff, I always keep saying to them, enough with the housing, you're not building any jobs. You go into New Haven, how many, if, if, if Yale wasn't in New Haven, and the hospital especially, where would all those people work? I don't know how many thousands of people are working that hospital system, but it's thousands, and you can keep building housing, but you know what? They, they're not keep building jobs there. I mean.
People need the housing, they're already here.
They, they, they need jobs, and we're not, you gotta manufacture widgets. Don't ask me what the widget is, but there's gotta be things that are manufactured here. So, you know, that's, that's the, they don't manufacture anything. So, all right, with that said, did we have a?
You need a motion?
I don't know. Did we have a motion or no on this? All right, so the motion for this one would be to authorize the first selectman to submit a letter of request to the State of Connecticut Department of Housing for a, um, I don't forget, remember, Ian, what the proper title of it was?
Certificate of Housing Completion.
Certificate of Housing Completes, Affordable Housing Completion. Okay, that would be the motion.
Second.
Motion is made, and, did you second it?
Seconded.
And seconded, okay. Judy and PJ. Okay. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Alright. Hasn't been a marathon tonight. Okay, committees, we have two items under that before we go to executive. Pension board, I think you said you don't have some?
I will next, thank you.
No report. Fred Wolf Park Ad hoc Committee, I don't know if you have an update, the gentleman?
Yes, uh, I'll start, and PJ, feel free to chime in. So, we have had an opportunity to speak to our engineers, um, the data came in. Um, as you know, or you may not know if you weren't at the meeting at Park and Rec, uh, but BNL provided us with a synopsis of different variations of what the park would look like, uh, which included traffic and safety measures. They also provided us data of what the public liked about those particular concepts. After that meeting and looking at the data with the committee, we had a phone discussion. And what we would like to do is use the data that's been provided by, uh, BNL, and use our town resources to implement temporary traffic and safety measures. We believe that it's proper to do temporary measures at this point because we don't have a master plan in place. BNL was nice enough to give us a look at some ideas of a master plan, but we would be spending resources where we would then have to change potentially, depending on what the master plan looked like. So, we would like to ask this board, or ask our first selectman, uh, I don't even know if we need a vote on it, but just to sort of implement these safety measures that were recommended by BNL. I know they've met with our first selectman. Um, we've also spoke to, um, our highway department, uh, the police department, they have resources that we can use temporarily, especially in light of it's springtime, there's a lot of activity down there, and we think if we can implement something now, uh, it would better protect the public. And that's where we're at at this time. I think BNL's done a great job to date. Um, they've been very efficient and, um, provided us a wealth of, of knowledge, especially for me, because I, you know, to me, when you look at something in a small area, which we were assigned to do, traffic and safety around the, the playscape and the, and then now to sort of look at it at a bigger picture, it's exciting, but right now I think the focus on is what our task was, and that's traffic and safety. And, and because we have resources at our fingertips versus several hundred thousand dollars worth of permanent fixtures at some point in time, I think this would be the best thing we, we, we could do going forward. So, again, Jim, I don't know if it requires any type of decision-making, other than, um, you know, we're moving forward, um, with ta- traffic and safety measures. That would be our suggestion as a board, and then also being able to do a master plan.
Look, PJ, chime in if you're gonna do it, then I'll.
No, that was a good summary, John. This way, you know, soccer is starting soon, lacrosse is already started.
I gave him the opportunity to plug it.
You know, we were at lacrosse this past weekend, uh, the playscape is being utilized, uh, it was pretty packed. So this way, with what we were tasked to do, we can make sure that area is safe for everybody, and then take the master plan and incorporate the whole complex and do everything that we've been working hard to try and do.
I met with the BNL engineer at your request. He contacted Ian to meet with me to see what we had available and all for the measures, and what I had to complete, and what was then gonna go into, you know, the next phase of, if, if they get the, uh, next phase of work. Um, but when, for those of you at home, when you, when they speak of the safety measures, we're talking about starting to put in some, uh, stop signs, some directional flow, uh, this sort of thing to help, um, control things a little bit. Um, and then, uh, I spoke with, it was Dominic, I think it's Celtruda is his name? I think it's Celtruda. Um, he was the one who came down, and, um, so he asked me what was still on, what I had agreed to do with the monies that I have available for it. And I said, "Well, I'm planning on doing this is the main entry off Hollow Road, now that, believe it or not, it's raining out now, but it's drying out slowly, and that's what has delayed us a bit, and I'll be, um, you'll see some stakes and some flagging going in along, um, well, probably both sides in some areas of that Wolf Park entry row, or, um, Hollow Road, empty r- entry road, because it's gotta get widened out. The turn is gonna get pushed further over, and then it'll come up that sidewalk that runs along the playground there, and all that's why that was put in so high, because once that gets paved, it won't be as high. Um, and then that's gonna go up to, uh, I call it an intersection where, um, you get up to the top of like the playground, and there'll be a stop sign there, just for a, a reference. And then, um, uh, once we get it done, there'll be a, a divider and all kind of two correct traffic. So if traffic's coming from, say, lacrosse, they're gonna hit a stop sign, then they would take a right and a left to leave kind of thing, um, for now. Soccer, they'll come to that area, and they'll go out that way, instead of sometimes they go like shooting stars. One'll go up the old asphalt path this way, one'll go up over here, and depends where their kids are playing and all. Um, the playground, I gotta be quite honest with you. I always thought it would be a good thing. We had differences of opinion at times on it, but I thought it would be a good thing. But I had no idea, on some of these nice days, there have been so many people there, and they're loving it. As a matter of fact, we got notified today by, uh, John Wazalowski, is I think, I don't know what his position is, but he's on the Orange Foundation. And they are contributing the first five thousand dollars towards a small, um, bigger than soccer, smaller than the fairgrounds, pavilion area for parents to, you know, there'll be some tables and all there, there'll be a cement slab and pavilion over it. But the playground committee had talked about that in the beginning, but you gotta let the well refill a little bit before you can, you know, spend some more on that sort of thing. But, so the Orange Foundation emailed me today that they're putting the first five thousand dollar donation towards that. I have to bring the water and electric. They come in off of, um, Hollow Road, they come up past Abdul Qadir's house, then they take a, a left, and they go through the woods and the wetlands, kind of by the wood chips, and then go all the way up to soccer, up there. So what, under the engineers have told me, the other engineers, not BNL, we gotta go into the woods where they head up to soccer, and they're gonna tee them there, which they tell me they can do. I'm not a plumber or electrician. And then they're gonna take from there and come across and go between the end of the sidewalk, and there's the stone wall there, so then there'll be power and water over on that playground side. And I wanna get that done before we pave that piece of road. So that, you'll see some activity at some point, hopefully this spring, uh, getting that done. And, um, once we get that, the power and electric over, then the, that driveway done, then there's gonna be some corrective action down on, uh, the one that comes out to Oak View. And I'll get that squared away, and then a couple thing, trees, I think, shrubs, we have to plant more still, then I'm done. Then the committee will have things. One of the things I really do like that they had on one of their plans, pot- potentials, was where you come in off of Oak View, and I had thought about it years ago, but again, funding. The dry, if they cleared some more land from where we cleared that field, that's kind of, soccer's on your left and it's a field on your right, and then you go through and lacrosse is down there and back. They wanna bring a driveway through from Oak View and up and around to that lacrosse parking that way, which is good. But there's a huge piece of land in there, and that's a big piece of that glacial plain, which for future use of some sorts. I don't know what the sorts may be, and I'm not putting my label on it, because they'll say that I did that. But, um, it's a nice piece of land there, so probably when that starts to happen, because I probably will be, uh, end up having another piece of land cleared there, and there'll be a lot of potential for more open space usage right there. And that piece of land that is cleared, that Rick Cap cleaned up on the, what would be the right side if you're headed to lacrosse, that could even be made bigger at that point. You know, that could be, um, you know, different types of fields. I think, you know, whether it gets used, I think the, the lacrosse is practicing on some of it now. I don't know, maybe Tom will use some of it at some, I don't know. But all I know is, my job is to clear it and get it ready, and then, like I said, we've used Rick Cap in the past. Rick Cap Silatro does a outstanding job. He really is unbelievable. I have to keep poking him before he retires to get a few more of these things done. Um, but yeah, so that's, I did like that plan of theirs a lot, because there's a big piece of land in there that, it's nice and it's pretty flat, and it's near the parking, and, you know, I think I'm probably gonna have to make, I made that parking lot over there for that playground, I, for like, like for thirty cars, or thirty-two cars, or something like that. And nowhere near big enough. I, I, I just, I, I stand in amaze, in amazement there. So, I mean, they're parking over on the soccer side, they're parking down the gravel road and all, but you know what? The kids are loving it, the parents are happy with it. Um, we should be getting the, um, the memorial bricks in and stuff are supposed to be going in now, once weather clears. They're in the fair building up at High Plains, so it's just a matter of, once spring really comes, they'll, Mark said he'll get that job done. So that's all I have to follow up on it, Mitch.
So with all that being said.
All that.
What, what, what exactly, I mean, we run into this problem time and again. Do we have a map that's gonna show what this layout, Jim did a great job of describing it. Do we have a map of what's being done?
They did present it, they presented it at Park and Rec. If you would like one, I have it upstairs.
Temporary, is it, what, what do you mean by temporary? We're gonna pave or not pave?
Oh, we can do both.
So, some of the temporary measures that we're talking about is stop signs, speed bumps, things like this that are simple, inexpensive, and the town can provide, uh, very quickly.
In immediate.
It can be changed, it can be changed.
But the, but the, but the loop, if you call it a loop, around the, um, the playground, and the cutting off of the soccer parking from that area, is how you call it, is that gonna be done, or is that just a temporary, I mean, I?
That's in the future. That's, that's not, at this point.
Right, again, to, to be very clear, our task as a committee was to do traffic and safety studies. Based upon the data that came in, BNL provided us with suggestions on where to put stop signs, speed bumps, different types of, um, safety measures. What they also did, and it wasn't just gratuitously, of course, but what they did is they provided us with different concepts, which included some of the things that you're mentioning, putting in another road, goes around the this and that.
That people voted on.
That people voted on. The reason why they did that, in my opinion, was twofold. One, they wanted people to see conceptually what it would look like with additional plans in place. We're not there. We're nowhere near there yet. Our job was to put in traffic and safety, which includes stop signs, speed bumps. But also, in order to do that, Mitch, we had to have an idea of what it would look like with different things. Because if we just all of a sudden said, "Alright, let's put in these permanent stop signs and permanent speed bumps," we're doing a disservice to the residents. But temporary measures right now, which can be moved, will allow us the opportunity as a committee to say, "Okay, the town would like to do Concept Three A, Three, or whatever it is, in a master plan. Now we can see whatever, maybe pickleball, maybe tennis, maybe additional fields, maybe additional parking lot, uh, a pavilion which has water, bathrooms, storage." So, we're not there yet. So, I know it's hard for everybody to s- sort of stop and realize what our task as a committee was, because it was hard for us. But, no, I'm not talking about putting in streets right now. I'm just talking about, they have an actual temporary plan of what's there, and it's.
I don't think you're gonna see that loop road go around behind the playground for two reasons. Number one, it will be right, the reason I put the playground where it is, away from that stone wall and all, is because once you get encroached there, then you get to the Army Corps of Engineers, because it's all wetlands beyond that stone wall. So that's a challenge on that. Plus, with the parking now being in such demand there, that loop road was gonna tie into that parking. I don't think personally that's a wise choice, now that we're seeing what's going on, but BNL will do the design work, not me. So when that comes, that will be.
One more way to look at it. If we went ahead and asked for funding for Three A right now, that was the one that everybody voted on, that liked. And then we do the master plan, and we come up with other ideas, and we have to, we're limited to the scope in going forward with any other ideas on, on Three A.
The playground's not gonna move, despite the fact that people say we gotta move the playground. Playground's not gonna move.
No.
Right. So, I don't understand why we went through that whole presentation, and people voted on Three A, it was the overwhelming choice, overwhelming choice, and now we're just saying, "We're gonna put in speed bumps and, and stop signs and not do that."
No, 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 that was for the future, for conceptual.
A conceptual's a lot more than just that part, that, that loop. We were, you're talking other, a lot more conceptual than just that.
Right, but you brought that up. That's why we're talking about it.
I know, but that, that's, to me, that was more the conceptual. That was to, to resolve a ci- uh, an actual, excuse me, an actual traffic flow problem we have now.
But there isn't one.
There is one.
No, there isn't.
There is one.
No, so.
No, there isn't.
Mitch, just to be very clear, and, and the purpose of that meeting was to talk about the public's input towards traffic and safety. And BNL was very clear that they made these designs, these conceptual designs, that they showed everyone as just examples. But the town, the residents that were at that meeting, said that they needed safety measures in place. That was the overwhelming direction that the public wants, and that's what our task was as a committee. So, I'm not talking, I, do I wanna do it all now? One hundred percent. I'd love to put in streets. I'd love to put in pickleball.
I, I hardly see that as being doing it all. All it wa- all it was, was, was a loop road to take the traffic around the playground, tie it into a parking lot. I mean, I don't understand, that, that's not, to me, that's not the, a, a, a full-blown plan. A full-blown plan's gonna show pickleball, it's gonna show fountains or, or stands and bathrooms. Well, they put it out there to a number of people, including myself, and I think I beg to differ with some of the descriptions here. The people at that meeting, I think, walked away saying, "Okay, we're actually gonna do something about that, about that road."
We are, but soccer and lacrosse time is right now. That's why we wanna do the temporary safety measures, to make sure that this year, this season.
This week.
That parking lot has been improved, and then we're, we're eager to get ahead, to go ahead with the master plan, too.
Yeah.
And then the expansion and development of that site.
That's hardly a master plan. All we're talking about is, is, is improving the safety of the fl- traffic flow, and you're saying putting in a few stop signs and we didn't have to spend that much money or time to put in stop signs and, 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 and speed bumps.
Wait, Mitch, you have disagreed with that playground.
I'm not disagreeing with the playground.
You're looking for a driveway that isn't at this point. These guys want to get just the speed bumps, which are the poly ones, you know, at this point.
I know what you're talking about, but it's not.
And sign some controls, traffic control signs and stuff in, because you have two big programs, two of the biggest utilizers of the park are beginning, and within, I think, actually, I think lacrosse already did start. And soccer is on the cusp of starting. And soccer is on the cusp of starting. So this is what they're gonna do, and we're gonna get some of these stop signs and things in for now, just so that they have that. Then as I get that last road done over there, you know, driveway in off of, um, I can never click with a hollow. That'll help a lot with that flow going out there, and then we'll get the one corrected down at Oak View. And then that road in between is, at this point, is just gravel, um, get it graded and roll, with millings rolled out and all, then you will be having traffic exit in a, in a much better manner than what you have now. Then in your next phase, should they decide to put something forward, um, like they did this time, they did it in a, kind of an à la carte fashion, I'll call it, and then they'll be in, if they use BNL or somebody else, um, and then they'll start to do the next part. But there is no problem at this point in time with that. That's, that's, that's a figment. I, there is no problem there at this moment.
You just said, there's people parking all over the place.
That's parking. You're talking about a road.
We're talking about both.
There's gotta be more parking. Come on up. You're there, so you know. We got more to go.
Town five zero five two three Fairway Road. Um, would really be nice for next week, and I'd be willing to pay for it. I, or Donnie Foyer maybe can make a, a sign saying lacrosse this way, playground that way.
That's part of it.
Yeah, and it's just that signage. I'm standing out there all day telling people, you know, the kids.
It's gonna be right when you go up by that sidewalk.
That, that's a big start.
That's right where it's gonna be.
That's a big start, because, you know, our problem is, is, and lacrosse's problem, we have people from out of town.
Separating.
And, and we've gotta get people going in the right direction.
You actually saw a lot of people from lacrosse.
That, that at least would be a big help.
Yeah, you, we actually saw a lot of people from lacrosse coming in from Oak View and exiting from Oak View, too, and that definitely helped the traffic flow, so.
Yeah, exactly. It's walk be- crawl before you walk, and walk before you run. Okay, with that said, we'll be ready to go into executive session. We have, um, a few things here to go into executive session. The first one is the proposed twenty-four, twenty-seven labor agreement between the Town of Orange and the Town of Orange Highway Department contract. Uh, the second one is, um, the, uh, teaming up with the State of Connecticut for our required share of a purchase of a development rights to some farmland here in town. Then Vinnie has two legal updates for you, one regarding the Urbano complaint, and one regarding the Antar complaint. Um, there will be possible votes on the, well, there will be a vote on the Highway Department Union contract, uh, vote on the, uh, development rights thing. There will be no votes, those are just uprights on the, inform on the two legals, and we will invite, uh, Finance Director Siffarelli in, uh, for the, he can stay for all, but it's certainly for number one. So with that, um.
So moved.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion at nine fifteen. Not like, I don't know, ten oh two, ten oh three. This is a marathon night tonight. Uh, the first item was the, uh, a labor agreement between the Town of Orange and the, uh, Highway Department Union.
Yep.
Uh, is there a motion to be made on that one?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the negotiations between the, the agreement between the Town of Orange and the Highway Department, ASME Local thirteen oh three dash oh two one, Council four, AFL CIO, for an agreement from July one, twenty twenty-four through July, it's June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
As discussed, as presented?
As presented. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Okay, Foyer, if you're not out of popcorn now, go to bed. Item number two was a discussion of purchase of development rights to farmland. This is an interesting concept that the State of Connecticut Department of Agriculture has, and we are partnering with the, uh, state, federal, uh, nat- nat- Agriculture Natural Conserva- Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, and the State of Connecticut Department of Agriculture. And when they do these partnerships, the town has to, uh, agree to partner with them with a ten percent, uh, buy-in to it. So the town has agreed to the ten percent buy-in amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars towards the development right purchase of a twenty-two acre parcel here in town. Due to confidentiality between the State of Connecticut and the landowner, at this time, it is not available to discuss the, the names on that, but, um, it was met with, uh, good support. Is there a motion as I made it?
So moved.
And Ian corrected it.
As presented.
Motion's made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Excellent. Uh, the last two items were updates on legal, uh, situations facing the Town of Orange. We were updated by Attorney Marino. There is no, um, vote taken on, action taken, thank you, on those items. With that said, trying to think if there's anything else to update you on, but being that it's five after ten at night, I'm not gonna. So. Motion to adjourn at ten oh five. All in favor? We're adjourned.